I'd like to call this meeting of Erie County Council on Tuesday, November 16th, 2021, to order at 6:15 PM. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I, the Pledge of Allegiance, give the flag of the United States of America and the Constitution of Parliament for which it stands, one nation under your high, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Counselman Rastetter, you are going to lead us in the optional prayer this evening?
Yes, sir. Should I just go right ahead?
Please.
I'm going to read the Indian Ten Commandments. I don't know if everybody got a chance to hear the regular Ten Commandments when we're out in Waterford. I'm big on old documents. So anyhow, remain close to the great spirit, show great respect for your fellow beings, give assistance and kindness whenever needed, be truthful and honest at all times, do what you know to be right, look after the well-being of the mind and body, treat the earth and all that dwell there with great respect, take full responsibility for your actions, dedicate a share of your efforts to the greater good, work together for the benefit of all mankind. That was easy enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hallelujah.
Thank you, Counselman Rastetter. Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Clear?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Here.
Mr. Rastetter?
Here.
Mrs. Rennie?
Here.
Mrs. Schauerman?
Here.
Mr. Shank?
Here.
Chairman Anderson?
Here. At this portion of our meeting, we have set aside time for the hearing of the public. For those who have called in in time to get their name on the agenda, the published agenda of council, you will receive five minutes. Anyone that wishes to speak before council and is here this evening will be allotted three minutes. When you come to the podium, if you will give us your full name and municipality, and I'll begin your time at that point. First on our agenda is Mr. James Rosenbaum, Chair of the Public and Safety Advisory Committee. Mr. Rosenbaum, please.
Hi, James Rosenbaum from Mill Creek Township. And I just wanted to come and speak very, very briefly on the issues that Public Safety Director John Graffy has been communicating with all of you pretty consistently recently regarding the vacancies that they've been experiencing up at the 911 center. And it's my hope that the efforts that he's put forth, as well as all of you, bring about some stabilization in the workforce up there. I've been a firefighter at Westridge Fire Department for 44 years, and I've got an extensive history as far as being a 911 dispatcher at Mill Creek Township. And I also assisted in creating the East Erie County Emergency Communications Center a number of years ago, so I've got a great deal of background in it. And I just wanted to say that, as John has referred before, the 911 telecommunications are really indeed the first first responders. They're the most vital link in the whole chain of public safety. And when we have inexperienced people up there, which we do right now, it makes a very critical difference to the people across the entire county when they call 911, typically on the worst day of their lives and need help. So I just wanted to take a few moments to thank John and to thank all of you for the efforts that you're putting forth to try to stabilize that workforce up there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and your service. Mr. Graffy, I know that you are on the agenda, but have indicated that you're going to yield your time. I just wanted to officially state that unless you would like to speak, and certainly feel free to do so.
Yeah, I'll refer my notice to do that, but I leave my time back to council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graffy. And then, those are the only two members of the public on the agenda, but are there any other citizens that wish to be heard? Thank you. As I mentioned, give us your full name and municipality, and I'll begin your time. And now, each member of the public will have three minutes. Please go ahead.
Thank you. My name's Aaron Capazello. I live in the city of Erie. Just a few words on behalf of my colleagues at 911 and why we think this ordinance is so important that it's passed. I've been at ECDOP for approximately four and a half years, and since that time, more people than I can count have come in and out the door. And I think that the people that remain here truly do have a commitment and a calling for public service, and that's why I think it's so important that we keep these people here. I've seen a lot of people that can do this job for six months, some can do it for a year. Very few people seem to actually be able to do this job as a career. Those are the people we need to keep the most. When you lose someone like me, I've been here four and a half years, as I said, it's taken me about three years to become fully cross-trained in police fire and call-taking. If I were to walk out the door, it would be like losing three people. And then when we replace that with someone who can only take calls, as the gentleman said, it really does affect the experience level and how we're able to help our colleagues and get them trained and really be a lifeline for the public. And really, in closing, that's all. That's why I think this ordinance is so important to be passed, not just for catching up our numbers, but for sustainability in the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments and your service. Are there any other citizens that wish to be heard?
My name's Jeff McFadden from the city of Erie. I was here last month. In front of you, I gave a five-minute speech on a lot of what you guys have heard, people leaving and how that impacts. Aaron brought that up, you know? Someone that's been here four years, that's kind of trained around the room and spent time doing that, they leave and it creates a bigger hole than a person. And I talked about last time, it takes about two years to get someone fully trained in an ideal situation, and where we're at right now, that ideal doesn't exist. I didn't have anything written, so I'm going to be kind of jumping back and forth. I wanted to point out Morgan Maxwell over there, she's our Spotlight Telecommunicator of the Month. In line with the vacancies, 310 hours of overtime worked by her since July. And that's both a commitment to the position, but also to her peers stepping up so that they don't have to be mandated to do that, and that's where a big step comes in. We have an entire room, sorry, a department full of people committed to helping each other and helping the citizens of the county, and having the extra income can help. One, it stabilizes what we have, but it also allows for a better standard of living. I've brought up in the past, or sorry, in the last month, about how we can't necessarily get away from what we're doing. There's a person on third shift, I believe, is working three jobs to make ends meet. And when you're dealing with people dying, crying, screaming, whatever, on the phone, or dispatching people to cardiac arrest where maybe you're not going to get there fast enough, if you can't get away, if you have to go to two more jobs, and you can't just escape or give yourself an opportunity to play your games or visit for family, it's rough. It's difficult. I don't know how much time I have left, but I wanted to talk about two calls really quick that I've taken in my life that have dramatically affected me. One, I was actually a train administrator at the time. I sat down with the trainee. We had an older gentleman call up distraught, his wife is not breathing, she's not awake, she is in cardiac arrest, and we were going to talk him through CPR the whole time he's talking about, please don't do this to me, you can't leave, you know, the struggles of a man who's about to lose his wife. Ambulance gets there, she gets to go to the hospital. That's a great step. Rather than calling the coroner, we're getting someone to the hospital. One big part that's difficult for our job is that we don't always have closure on what happens. I don't know what happens next, but I do know what happens next in this call. The next week, I get an email from our QA director. She got to the hospital, they brought her back, her family had a chance to say goodbye, and she died. We saved someone's life long enough to take it to the family's enclosure, and that means the world to me that we did that. This next call is a little bit worse. It was public knowledge, 18-year-old male drowned in, excuse me, the gorge. I did not take that call, I dispatched that call. And when we finally got the word that they got out of, got him out of the water, as the rest of the staff cheered, I just kind of fell within myself because I knew for as long as he was in there, the end result was what occurred. He just didn't make it. I was quiet for the rest of my shift. I went home, I cried. I woke up the next morning, my son knew him, so now my son is dealing with his own mortality, an 18-year-old boy, and I go back into my room and I cry again. There's nothing I could have done differently. And for the next two days, it killed me, knowing there's nothing more that I could have done, nothing more that there was able to be done, but I couldn't escape it because I had to be back at work. That's all I've got, just things to think about. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and your service. Are there any other citizens that wish to be heard?
May I?
Mr. Graffy, you will have up to five minutes since you are on the agenda.
Chairman Anderson, members of council. My name's John Graffy, I live in Gerard Borough. I'm also the Director of Public Safety. You heard the emotion out of two telecommunicators, that the dedicated men and women at public safety, yes, for their livelihood, to take care of themselves and their family. But moreover, is the dedication of serving our community and the first responders. The countless hours of hours worked, well and above over the traditional 40-hour work week cannot be understated. They are the first first responders of our community, long before police fire or the paramedics arrive on location. It starts with the 911 call, it starts with their first point of contact, and that is these dedicated men and women that go through countless hours of training and continuing education to be able to answer those call for service. I provide all of you a rationale dated October 15th, and during that time, we had 12 vacancies. As of last week, we now have 17 vacancies, full complement is 52. I've lowered minimum staffing levels twice from full complement, would normally be 10 telecommunicators per shift, lowered it to nine, and now I lowered it again to eight. That has a negative impact, let's make no mistake about that. That means those that are working more is expected of them, you know, in this case, to take on the additional workload and the additional responsibilities. But based on the current staff, based on skill level, based on best practices and benchmarking, talking to my counterparts of other counties, I, you know, made that difficult decision to lower it to eight. What's affected when you lose telecommunicators with experience, as Aaron and Jeff mentioned, is yes, we can hire new employees, but it takes a minimum of two years, usually three, to bring them up to a skill level where they are cross-trained around the room, that they can answer and process calls, and then provide subsequent dispatch services at the same time. So when we have experienced telecommunicators leaving county employment for other opportunities, what's being affected in addition to our employees is the quality and the level of service that our community expects of us when they call 911, and that includes our first responders. So together, working with my employees, my management team, the county administration, even a third-party consultant, and then all of you, which, you know, once again, cannot be understated, you know, we've been working on this since the beginning of the year, countless hours of work to present the proposal that is currently in front of you for your consideration, and the countless hours that we have spoken, you know, during meetings or even one-on-one to bring us to the point where I'm requesting that, you know, you consider voting to approve the pay plan, which will not only help with the recruitment aspects, raising the starting salary to a fair and equitable wage, but the retention aspect to retain the employees who currently have working, have public safety, and continuing to do the great job that they do. Thank you. I yield back.
Thank you, Mr. Graffy. Are there any other citizens that wish to be heard? Are there any other citizens that wish to be heard? And finally, are there any other citizens that wish to be heard? Seeing none, we'll continue on with our meeting. We don't have any minutes tonight from previous meeting, so we'll continue on with reports of county officials. Mr. Sparber, does the county executive or any of her designees have any reports this evening?
Not tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sparber. Next is a report from the Finance Committee. Finance Chairwoman Clear, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
The Finance Committee met on Thursday, November 10th, 2021, and the Finance Committee is submitting to the agenda old business items A through C and new business items A through CC. Thank you very much. That concludes my report. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Finance Woman, Chairwoman Clear. Next on our agenda is the Personnel Committee, and Personnel Committee Chairwoman Rennie, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
The Personnel Committee met on Thursday, November 10th, 2021, and tonight I am submitting to the agenda under new business items DD through GG. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Personnel Chairwoman Rennie. Next on our agenda are, tonight we have two citations being presented before council. Mr. Smith, we have a first citation for Carol Brotherson. Could you please read that for us?
Mrs. Carol Brotherson, 1937 to 2021. Whereas Carol Brotherson met her heavenly father on October 23, 2021, at the age of 84 years. Carol was born on June 21, 1937, to the late L. Kirk and Violet Weed Bionson in Union City, Pennsylvania, Bessonson, rather. Whereas Carol had an idyllic childhood growing up in Canada Lake, loved to tell stories of the simple life she shared with her brothers, sisters, aunts, uncles, grandparents on the lake, she would later instill those same strong family values in her own children. Whereas Carol was a graduate of Union City Joint High School, class of 1955, and briefly attended Edinburgh State Teachers College, where she studied home economics, this later proved useful when she moved to Erie and met and married her husband, Robert Brotherson, on March 26, 1966, and together they built a beautiful life. And whereas Carol had a successful career for over 20 years with Sarah Coventry Jewelry, retiring as an area manager in the early 80s to pursue her dream of starting a catering business. Together with her husband Bob, they owned and operated Carol's Culinary Cuisine for nearly 40 years. They loved to cook and entertain and always threw the most wonderful soirees. She will always be remembered for amazing food, which she showed lovingly prepared. Whereas Carol's passions also included theater, she was both a lifelong, longtime volunteer and an employee of Erie Playhouse, working in sales. She always concentrated on the behind-the-scenes work until her friend Dave Matthews once convinced her to join the cast of The Music Man, her only appearance on stage. In addition to the Erie Playhouse, she also worked in advertising sales for the Academy Theater in Meadville. Whereas Carol had a strong faith and for many years was an active volunteer and member of Emmanuel Baptist Church, Erie and Camp Judson in North Springfield, Pennsylvania. In later life, she attended Glenwood United Methodist Church, Erie, and Liberty Baptist Church in St. Petersburg, Florida. She loved her time in Florida, her friends at Sunset Palms, Pinella Park. She and Bob spent winters there for over 25 years, enjoying time at the pool, card games with friends, and always entertaining. And whereas Carol was preceded in death by her beloved husband Bob and two stepchildren, Richard Brotherson and Nancy Smith, her nephew Craig Bessonson Jr., and her grandson Craigy Green II. Those left to share their memories include her four children, Craig Green, wife Kim of McCain, Bradley Green, wife Cassie of Erie, Sonia Nekeloff, and husband John of Waterford, Roberta Ebert and partner Larry Creekey of Erie, 15 grandchildren, Jay, Kyle, Brandon, L.K. Green, Christie, Bailey, JP, Justin, Sean, Nekeloff, Lori Spoto, Jennifer Madars, Erica de Mori, Leah and Eric Brotherson, and Brendan Smith, and Lauren Collagen, 17 great-grandchildren, two great-great-grandchildren, twin brothers Greg Bessonson of Erie and Gary Bessonson of Michigan, and a sister Brenda married to John Morse of Virginia, a sister-in-law Marjorie Eagleton from Howard Creek, and many nieces, nephews, and special cousins. Now therefore, we the undersigned members of Erie County Council, join in celebrating the life of Carol Brotherson, a woman whose soulful good nature and love for her family, friends, and community will be deeply missed. May she rest in peace. And witness whereof, we have set our hands on the seal of Erie County the 16th day of November 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I just wanted to mention that it was Carol's culinary cuisine, and I knew that because I had an opportunity to enjoy her catering for a number of years. Carol was one of the nicest, kindest persons you could ever meet. And as it turns out, we found out that Carol and I are fourth double cousins. We're both salmon and wheat descendants from early Erie County families. And the last several years, we enjoyed sharing our family histories together and we did different research. So she, I know, is certainly missed by the members of her family, and she'll be missed by her friends and community. And thank you for that, Mr. Smith. Next on our agenda, we have a special citation for a member of council who is not aware of this citation yet. We're going to share it with him now. But, Mr. Smith, could you please read the citation for Colonel Robert C. Whipple for us in its entirety? This citation will also be included as a resolution later in the council agenda. Mr. Smith?
In praise of Colonel Robert C. Whipple, USAF. Whereas United States Air Force Colonel Robert C. Whipple was born in Erie, Pennsylvania, on September 21, 1913, had four siblings, Orville, Kenneth, Jack Whipple, and Mary Ann Rastetter. Married to Irene, they had two sons, Brett and Gregory, and three grandchildren. And whereas Colonel Whipple graduated from West Point Academy in 1939, was a member of the Flying Class of 1941, made Air Force history by taking the first mass flight of B-17 bombers from March Field, California, to Hawaii, attended Command and General Staff School at Fort Leavenworth, Kansas, in 1943, attended the Air Command and Staff School, taking communications and electronics courses at Maxwell Air Force Base. And whereas during World War II, Colonel Whipple served as Deputy Commander, later Commander of the 456th Bomber Group in Italy, received two distinguished unit citations in 1944 for performance at Wiener Neustadt, where he led the 456th in adverse weather, which stood repeated attacks by enemy interceptors, and still successfully completed their bombing mission. In Hungary, his bombing group raved severe fighter attacks and anti-aircraft fire to destroy oil facilities in Budapest. Whereas Colonel Whipple rose to Commander of the 52nd Bomber Wing of the United States Strategic Air Command. Colonel Whipple's service includes duty at USAF Headquarters in Washington, D.C., served as a logistic expert for General Matthew Ridgway, the former U.S. Army Chief of Staff, served on the Armed Services Petroleum Board of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, served as Base Commander at Davis-Monthan Air Force Base, 1954 to 1955, graduated from the Air War College at Maxwell Air Force Base, 1956, named Deputy Commander of the 376th Bomber Wing, named Base Commander of the 376th in 1957, succeeding Colonel Ralph J. White. And whereas Colonel Whipple died March 1, 1997, finishing his career as a math teacher at Pompano High School, Pompano, Florida, it was said about him by his colleagues, he was quite simply the finest man who ever lived. Now therefore, we the undersigned members of Erie County Council, especially his nephew, Scott Rastetter, join a grateful community in recognizing Colonel Robert C. Whipple, USAF, a native son of Erie, whose astounding service record and contributions to aeronautics put him in singular company in the annals of Erie County, qualifying him for placement on the Erie Air Wall of Fame, Erie International Airport. And witness whereof, we have set our hands on the seal of Erie County the 16th day of November 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Counselman Rastetter, hopefully that was satisfactorily satisfactory to you. You gave me an assignment to do some research.
Thank you, Chairman Anderson.
And...
Quite surprised. Pleasantly surprised.
That's wonderful, and we're honored for the service of your uncle and to your service to this body. And County Clerk Smith and Nicole and myself tried to figure out as much research as we could to add in there, and hopefully that's satisfactory to you. And would you like to make any further comments?
Well, there's actually a lot more than I knew, except, you know, I knew he commanded airport bases and stuff all over the world. And my mother, actually, you've missed a couple of the sons, there was two more sons, her brothers to Uncle Bob, and there was, there was the three older children, and then years later, there were three younger children, which were, you know, my mother was one of those. But she lived with them on several of the air force bases, I guess, when she was young, so she got to travel a little bit. But, yeah, anyhow, this is a lot more than I knew, too. I knew the couple of little things about him. He actually was instrumental in starting the Air Force Academy, too. He graduated from West Point, and after all this other stuff, like in the early, well, mid-'50s, I guess, he was instrumental in starting the Air Force Academy and getting the Air Force established outside the Army Air Corps after World War II and Korea. So, yeah, this is quite a surprise. I kind of wonder what happened to all that, but I knew you'd come up with something. I kind of wonder what happened to all that, but I knew you'd come up with something.
Well, your grandfather wasn't supposed to trick us and have two different families.
Well, yeah, yeah, they had the three or four original sons, or the three original sons, and then like 10 or 15 years later, they had three more children, and that was why there was such a big age difference. But.
Well, congratulations to you.
I knew he was a big wig. And he was premier, he went to Academy High School, and.
June related.
Yeah, Uncle Bob. He had a swimming pool, too, and a nice big yacht.
Thank you, Mr. Rastetter.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other council members that have any comments? Okay. Next on our agenda is a report from the Election Board. And Madam Election Board, Chair Rennie, if you could give us that report now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm pleased to report that the Erie County Board of Elections met today to certify the results from the 2021 general municipal election. For me, this is significant because it's been a long couple of years, serving last year as the Vice Chair of the Board of Elections with Chairman Henderson and serving as Chairman. It's been a challenge, and it's been a team effort, really been a team effort to see that the elections are carried out and done well and done reliably. And we have done so, again, with, and I, again, kudos to Mr. Doug Smith, who leads that charge. And it's more than a team effort, it's actually an army effort. I think people don't realize just the extent, the number of people who work in elections, probably close to 900 altogether, when you count poll workers and machine operators and judges of elections and all of the people in between, plus the people who work here at the courthouse and beyond. So I would like to commend everyone who worked in this election, who truly is part of what makes the United States what it is. And I know that the people who do so are dedicated to that ideal. So, thank you, and I appreciate the chance to commend them and speak. I'll be back in a moment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairwoman Rennie, for that report. And once again, congratulations to you and your board on an outstanding job in 2021. Next on our agenda are Old Business Items, which, Mr. Smith, we have a second reading tonight of Ordinance Number 91. If you could read that for us in title only, please.
A second reading of Ordinance 91, 2021. 2021 General Fund Budget Revised Expenditures of $25,000 for Increased Election Costs.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Rennie. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On Ordinance 91, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. The other items under Old Business tonight will remain on the table, so we will continue on to the items under New Business.
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chairwoman Clear?
I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda. I would like to add Resolution 60 to the agenda, and I would also like to move items A, B, C, D, 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 E, E, F, F, and G, G to a second read. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have a motion to amend the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Horton. Are there any further comments or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote on amending the agenda.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, may we now have a second reading of Ordinance Number 111 in title only, please?
A second reading of Ordinance 111, 2021. 11th 2021 Library Fund Budget. Supplemental appropriation of $16,000 and creation of a new line item for National Endowment of the Arts 2021-2022 Grant.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Rastetter. Are there any further comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On Ordinance 111, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Mr. Smith, may we have a second reading of Ordinance Number 112 in title only, please?
A second reading of Ordinance Number 112, 2021. Amending Ordinance 88, 2021. Ninth 2021 Library Fund Budget. Supplemental appropriation of $22,450, Friends of the Library Donation.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Showerman, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Clear. Are there any further comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On Ordinance 112, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Mr. Smith, may we have a second reading of Ordinance Number 113 in title only, please?
A second reading of Ordinance Number 113, 2021. Third 2021 Planning Fund Budget. Supplemental appropriation of $87,339 for PennDOT professional fees.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Rennie. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On Ordinance 113, Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Mr. Smith, may we now have a second reading of Ordinance Number 114 in title only, please?
A second reading of Ordinance Number 114, 2021. 32nd 2021 General Fund Budget. Supplemental appropriation of $85,000 for Public Defender Building Roof Replacement.
So moved.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Rennie. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Councilwoman Showerman?
Mr. Chairman, I want to go on record that I was a little disappointed in the bids. I didn't really agree with them. I thought they were on the high side. I know we bought the building as is, and I know the repairs have to be done. I felt that the roof could have been bid out differently in some regard, given to shingles, instead of just the metal roof. So just on principle, I will not support this.
Thank you. Are there any further comments or questions? I, too, would like to echo some of your sentiments, Councilwoman Showerman. As we've all gone through this pandemic together, we found a need for us to move the public defenders building and, in fact, make larger space for our own election offices. And in attempting to find a location close to the courthouse, but something that would fit the needs and the possibility of growth, the location that was purchased on Second Street was found to be something that they felt they could not only move into immediately, but have the possibility of expansion. We knew early on that there were some issues with the roof. We set money aside in the CARES money and the ARPA funds to attempt to ensure that these things were taken care of. And now this has extended to a larger problem. And I know when it comes to, it's been difficult to get contractors in, and it's been difficult through the purchasing code process, et cetera. I wish we could have got to this particular item sooner. I think it has increased the cost, but nonetheless, we have a responsibility to bear that cost. I am, myself, also not happy with the way this process has come down and the cost, but as we've said many times before, the buck stops with council, and we have a responsibility to continue moving forward and making sure that now that we own that property is taken care of. So, Mr. Smith, with that, if you could have a roll call vote, please?
On Ordinance 114, Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
No.
Chairman Anderson?
And just so people in the audience know, when we come to the public portion of our meeting, council members have discussed and done their research and worked with members of the administration, and had discussions and committees and amongst ourselves, and we come out here fairly ready to vote on particular items. So as we go through the agenda rather quickly, it is because we've already gone through these items in caucus and have been prepared to move these items forward and move, as we've done tonight on many of them, to a second, to keep the public business moving forward. So with that said, Mr. Smith, may we have a first reading of Ordinance Number 115? And could you include the names of the council members' appointees that has been included in our package?
Would you like it in its entirety, then, Mr. Chairman?
Well, just the title and the names, unless that makes it the entirety, then, I guess, yes.
A first reading of Ordinance Number 115, 2021. Appointment of Members to the Erie County Rail Futures Commission. District One, proposed appointment of Kim Clear, Mark Restefo. District Two, proposed appointment of Andre Horton, Cindy Purvis. District Three, Mary Rennie, proposed appointment, Brian Pitzer. District Four, Carl Anderson III, proposed appointment, Alan Thayer. District Five, Brian Shank, proposed appointment, Ray Grabowski. District Six, Scott Rastetter, proposed appointment, David Skelly. District Seven, Ellen Showerman, proposed appointment, Kevin Garbin.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. May we now have a first reading of Ordinance Number 116 in title only?
A first reading of Ordinance Number 116, 2021. Approving the 2022 Erie County Community College Budget.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, could you please read us the title of Resolution 55? And would you also include the appointees to the commission, please?
Resolution Number 55, 2021. Appointing the Erie County District Revision Commission. Appointees include Chad Volucius, Esquire, Richard Vendetti, Esquire, Freda Tepfer, Russell Warner, Esquire, and Thomas Hutzelman.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Rastetter. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, I just want to make a couple of quick comments, and certainly thank Mr. Thomas Hutzelman, who's with us tonight. Mr. Hutzelman also served this community on this redistricting commission 10 years ago. Every 10 years, as we have the federal census taken and receive the results of that census, county council has within three months of those results to seat a redistricting commission to look at the representative lines of each of the seven county council districts. In the 2010 census, each council member was assigned the representation of roughly 40,000 residents of Erie County. That population has decreased by about 21,000, or roughly 3,000 per district. So the main focus of the commission will be to redistrict fairly and proportionately, so each member of council will represent roughly 37,000 members. We look to have that commission's work done and back to council by January 15th, and so this is of a timely nature before petitions are taken out in the next primary. And I want to thank all of the members who are going to serve. This is important work to our community, and the service from each of these members is truly a community service. So thank you to all of them for that, and, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On Resolution 55, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. May we now have a reading of Resolution Number 56 in title only, please?
Resolution Number 56, 2021. Approving the Settlement Agreement Between Mill Creek Township, the Mill Creek Township School District, and National Church Residences, NCR, of Mill Creek, and the County of Erie.
So moved.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Rennie. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On Resolution Number 56, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Mr. Smith, may we have a reading of Resolution Number 57 in title only, please?
Resolution Number 57, 2021. Approving Changes to the Erie County Public Safety Advisory Committee Bylaws.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Horton, and Councilwoman Clear?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to table this, Resolution Number 57.
Thank you. We have a motion to table.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear to table, seconded by Councilman Horton. Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
We normally don't make comments on items that we table, but I will since members of the Public Safety Advisory Committee are here. I just wanted, and I don't think you were in the caucus meeting when this occurred yet, but our solicitor had not had an opportunity to look over the language and get back to council. So just for that reason only, council felt more comfortable in waiting until we hear back from our solicitor, and that's why we're tabled instead of. Mr. Smith, may we now have a reading of Resolution number 57 in title only, please? I'm sorry, 58. Excuse me.
Resolution number 58, 2021, amending Resolution 38, 2021, to add the Northwest Tri-County Intermediate Unit to the agreement between the Erie County Department of Health and 13 Erie County School Districts to support enhanced pandemic coordination, mitigation, and education.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Showerman, seconded by Councilman Horton. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On resolution number 58, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, may we now have a reading of Resolution number 59 in title only?
Resolution number 59, 2021, approving agreement between the Erie County Department of Public Health and the Erie County Technical School to support enhanced pandemic coordination, mitigation, and education.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Showerman, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Clear. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On resolution number 59, Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
We are now at the portion of our meeting where we're going to do a first reading of each of the funds for the budget, which this council will pass on November 30th. We need to do a first reading, so when we get to that budget meeting on the 30th, we can vote on these. Mr. Smith is going to read without interruption from myself once he begins from ordinance number 932110. And again, this is just a formality that council goes through in each and every budget session. And Mr. Smith, when you're ready.
A first reading of ordinance number 93, 2021, 2022 Debt Service Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 94, 2021, 2022 Employee Fringe Benefit Fund. A first reading of ordinance number 95, 2021, 2022 Health Choices Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 96, 2021, 2022 Mental Health Intellectual Disabilities Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 97, 2021, 2022 Drug and Alcohol Abuse Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 98, 2021, 2022 Children and Youth Services Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 99, 2021, 2022 Planning and Community Development Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 100, 2021, 2022 Domestic Relations Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 101, 2021, 2022 Library Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 102, 2021, 2022 Public Health Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 103, 2021, 2022 Public Safety Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 104, 2021, 2022 Gaming Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 105, 2021, 2022 Liquid Fuels Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 106, 2021, 2022 Pleasant Ridge Manor Operating Fund. A first reading of ordinance number 107, 2021, 2022 Pleasant Ridge Manor Depreciation Reserve Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 108, 2021, 2022 Erie County Care Management Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 109, 2021, 2022 General Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 110, 2021, 2022 Real Estate Tax Levy.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for that. And we'll give you just a moment to...
Get a drink.
And...
You guess you did have a drink.
I'm ready.
All right. A true warrior. A true warrior. Thank you. Then, Mr. Smith, may we have a second reading of ordinance number 117 in title only, please?
A second reading of ordinance number 117, 2021, 2021 Public Health Fund Budget, revised expenditures of $2,000 to cover shortage and temporary staff line of maternal and child health bureau.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Showerman, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Clear. Are there any further comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On ordinance 117, Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. May we now have a second reading of ordinance number 118 in title only, please?
A second reading of ordinance number 118, 2021, 33rd, 2021 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $12,298 for public defender part-time to full-time position and increase in expense lines.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Rennie, seconded by Councilman Horton. Are there any further comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On ordinance number 118, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, should we take a recess now?
Oh, my God. I don't think the dispatchers would appreciate that.
Just wanted to say if there are any questions where we're at. Mr. Smith, may we have a second reading of ordinance number 119 in title only, please?
A second reading of ordinance number 119, 2021, amending ordinance 122, 2020, Erie County Non-Bargaining Employees Pay Plan and revised expenditures in the Public Safety Fund of $34,634.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Showerman, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Clear. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Councilman Schenk?
Thank you, sir. Director Graffy, thank you. I wish you would have brought this to our attention just a little bit sooner. We could have got ahead of this a little quicker, but thank you. To the dispatchers, I personally thank you for coming out here and talking to us. I've personally worn a radio on my hip for most of my adult life. And when I hear that little voice in my ear telling me that everything's going to be okay and help is on the way, we appreciate that. And the gentleman that spoke about not knowing what happens to the end of our calls, I understand that fully. But it's also reassuring when you get that call and you do your best. And that person comes down to your fire station about four weeks later, when he was in cardiac arrest, him and his wife look at you square in the eye and say, "Thank you." It's all worth it. So I'm going to support this, no problem. Thank you, I yield back.
Thank you. Any other members of council? Councilman Horton?
Director Graffy, you want to echo my colleague, Councilman Schenk's comments? I too have had the privilege of wearing a radio depending on a dispatcher to give us the lay of the land. There's nothing like responding to a call, particularly a burglary or robbery call or an alarm, and not knowing the information. And I happen to know that you are, you really are the first fresh responders. Because a lot of times, if we don't have the information, we show up and we're not prepared or whatever. Your directors always fought for a man or woman up at the Public Safety. And I've been having this discussion for a couple of years now. It's just been a learning. You have the same circumstances or situations similar with the Sheriff's Department. But I do recognize the commitment. And it would be, I would be remiss if I didn't mention your families, because I also know that behind every good dispatcher is an understanding of family. And I don't know if you're married or not, but, you know, it's kind of hard on marriages sometimes with the hours that you spend away from home. And sometimes it's even hard to disconnect from the things that you heard or that you know taking place during the day answering those calls. So I too, I'm enthusiastic about supporting this. We recognize that it just kind of puts you on par with everybody. But we happen to know and believe that we are the best dispatchers in the entire county, bar none. We believe that because we know what we paid for training for you guys. And if we didn't believe it, we know when all the other departments around try to pilfer you from us, we turn you up, factor you up, and they take you off our hands. And what kind of farmer plants a field and doesn't expect to harvest? Or raise a lamb to a sheep and doesn't expect to get wool? In ladies' terms, we call it return on our investment. And as much as we pay you, no matter what we pay you, we could never get the return on our investment that you give to us in terms of lives saved, in terms of emergency answer, which is usually at a person's worst moment. People don't call the police or call 911, they say, "Hey, I'm having a good day." They call you when you're in distress. So thank you, not just for me and my colleagues, but for me and my family. We really truly thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Horton. Vice Chairwoman Clear?
Thank you. I don't want to prolong the vote any longer, but I really need to express my gratitude to everyone in the audience, everyone that works in public safety. Director Graffy, from the moment you, I met you two years ago, when Councilwoman Rennie and I had the pleasure of taking that tour and seeing for ourselves exactly what that 911 center looked like and all of the steps you've taken to make it a workplace where people would feel like it was a family, God bless you. I have seen firsthand what you've done. I've never had the radio. And I cannot express to you the gratitude I have for having have the radio, to also to my colleagues who wear that. That is a true public service. And, you know, it's moments like this where I look at starting the grade of a solicitor, you know, at twice as much as what you are paid. And I think, but did they save lives? You save lives. And I hope you look yourselves in the mirror and know the gravity of that. Thank you very much for all you do. I yield.
Thank you. Councilwoman Showerman?
I'll be very quick, but I also want to express my gratitude to all of you for everything that you do every day. And as a healthcare professional, I know that experience makes a difference between life and death. And I'm sorry that this is so late in coming.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman? Councilman Rastetter?
I'm just going to add a big thank you to Director Graffy and all the employees at the Public Safety Building out there. Hope you get your parking lot fixed pretty soon. And just thank you very much on behalf of the whole courthouse staff and the citizens of the county. It's amazing what you do, just amazing. Thank you.
Councilwoman Rennie?
I couldn't let this go without, because I'd be the only one not saying so. But actually, I don't know, I may be the one who's known John the longest. It was before he was the director. After he addressed some of the other directors a few times, I thought, why isn't this guy the director? He's fabulous. But I have such high regard for John, as I've told him a number of times. And when he says something, it's something that you can believe. It's something that is true and honest, and it's backed up by all of the data and supporting information. And this has been a long time in coming, as many people have recognized. And so, John, just a salute to you, your dedication, and the dedication of your staff, because I think that's a reflection of professionalism that you bring to the job as well. So thank you, and I'm pleased to be voting on this tonight.
Thank you. I want to thank the members of the public safety and particularly the 911 center. We know that you have fallen under very difficult circumstances, particularly as we go through this pandemic and continue through the pandemic. The work is never done, but your commitment is without bending. And all here have already expressed their commitment to this endeavor and the belief that they have in you as dedicated public service. When council votes on this, and for many of you and many people in the public, they may not understand what council has been doing, or maybe feel that we were too slow in moving this forward, but the colleagues that I have that surround me are methodical in the work that they do. And they do their homework, and when they come to a decision, they come to a definitive decision. And we wanted to make sure, as the person's responsible for the budgetary and fiscal commitments of this community, that we were doing the appropriate thing. And as John knows, I fully support this endeavor. I was concerned that we weren't going far enough. I still have those concerns, that we're catching up to something that we've already been behind in as the ball with other people is continuing to move forward. So I think this is just the beginning of what we need to continue to do and the discussions that need to continue to be had. But to get where we are tonight, certainly the members of the administration, the county executive, her finance team, her director, particularly Director Graffy, and the union have all come together to collaborate and... to collaborate and compromise, uh, to be able to put this forward. It's not just as simple as, uh, increasing a salary. Uh, there's a lot that goes into it and a lot of work that's been done, uh, to do this. And with the work that council, uh, is undertaking, uh, we know that with this ordinance that we're passing tonight, uh, we are, in fact, adding to the next year's budget, uh, solidifying an increase in the budget, uh, that we haven't even voted on yet. Uh, and so a lot of those things had to be put into place, uh, and make sure we had it right, uh, before we move this to progress. And, um, so, uh, as we said, uh, once we got that information together, uh, we would take this from the first reading to a second reading. So from our standpoint, this hasn't been delayed, uh, because we're catching it up by moving it to a second reading tonight. So, uh, with that, to not delay it any further, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote on Ordinance Number 119?
Mr. Horton?
Lord, yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
All caps, yes.
Oh, wait, all caps, exclamation point, yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Congratulations, uh...
Can I get along?
Yeah, to, to the entire, uh, public service, uh, public safety community. Uh, we, uh, we need you, and we need your continued dedication and commitment. So, uh, thank you for all the work that you continue to do. Um, Mr. Smith, we also have on our agenda a, um, second reading of Ordinance Number 120. Uh, if you could read that to us in title only, please?
A second reading of Ordinance Number 120, 2021, approving a starting grade for the new court solicitor.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by, uh, Councilman Showerman, seconded by Councilman Horton. Are there any other comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On Ordinance 120, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
I vote twice.
It doesn't count twice.
Only one counts. Does that mean they get two raises?
I guess when I said Lord...
No.
I'm special when I vote the Lord.
Mr. Chairman?
Um, yes, uh, Vice Chairwoman Clear?
Um, I, do we want to, um, ask all the news stations here today to maybe plug the fact that the 911 center's hiring at a higher rate? Are we allowed to do that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
You have the mic.
911 center, how do they apply, Mr. Grappi?
Through the county website.
Through the county website. Jobs available.
I sent him a recruit the other day. He asked for a reference. I gave him, I, you got a recruit coming, sir, trust me.
Uh, thank, thank you for that, and, uh, very, very much appropriate. Um, we still do have a couple items, uh, before we finish. Um, I just wanted to make one, uh, comment about the ordinance we just passed. Uh, this is another ordinance that, uh, council has recognized that, um, we are locking in to, uh, next year's budget, uh, by the passage of this ordinance. Uh, and, uh, council will, uh, further, um, deal with the, the issues of the position, um, as we, uh, continue our deliberations with the budget. Um, we have added to our, um, agenda for tonight, Resolution Number 60. Mr. Smith, could you, uh, read a resolution, um, Resolution Number 60, uh, for us in its entirety, please?
Resolution Number 60, 2021, Recognizing the Historical Accomplishments of Colonel Robert C. Whipple, USAF. Whereas Colonel Whipple graduated from West Point Academy in 1939, was a member of the Flying Class of 1941, made Air Force history by taking the first mass flight of B-17 bombers from Marchfield, California to Hawaii, attended Command and General Staff School at Fort Leavenworth, Kansas, 1943, attended the Air Command and Staff School, taking communications and electronics courses at Maxwell Air Force Base. And whereas during World War II, Colonel Whipple served as deputy commander, later commander of the 456th Bomber Group in Italy, received two distinguished unit citations in 1944 for performance at Wiener Neustadt, where he led the 456th in adverse weather, withstood repeated attacks by enemy interceptors, and still successfully completed their bombing mission. In Hungary, his bombing group braved severe fighter attacks and anti-aircraft fire to destroy oil facilities in Budapest. Whereas Colonel Robert Whipple rose to commander of the 52nd Bomber Wing of the United States Strategic Air Command, Colonel Whipple's service included duty at USAF Headquarters in Washington, DC, served as logistics expert for General Matthew Ridgeway, the former US Army Chief of Staff, served on the Armed Services Petroleum Board of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, served as base commander at Davis-Monthan Air Force Base, 1954 and 1955, graduated from the Air War College at Maxwell Air Force Base, 1956, named deputy commander of the 376th Bomber Wing, and named base commander of the 376th in 1957, succeeding Colonel Ralph J. White. Resolved, Erie County Council recognizes the historically significant accomplishments of United States Air Force Colonel Robert C. Whipple, a native son of Erie, whose astounding service record and contributions to aeronautics place him in singular company in the annals of Erie County. Be it further resolved, the Board of Directors of the Erie Regional Airport Authority are hereby urged to place Colonel Robert C. Whipple on the Erie Wall of Fame at the Erie International Airport.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh, Councilman, uh, Rastetter, would you like to make the motion?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion by, uh, Councilman Rastetter, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Clear. Are there any further comments or questions from members of council? Uh, Mr. Rastetter, I just wanted to say, uh, congratulations, uh, to you, um, and, uh, to the honor of your family, uh, with the service of your uncle. Uh, we have, uh, also sent this to our colleagues on Erie City Council, uh, to pass a similar resolution at their meeting, uh, hopefully tomorrow, uh, also encouraging them, uh, to send it to the Airport Authority for, uh, for passage to have been included on the wall of fame. Uh, with that said, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On Resolution Number 60, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. The next meeting of, uh, Erie County Council will take place on December 14th at 6:00 PM here in Erie County Courthouse, Room 117, uh, which is a Tuesday. And our next, uh, Finance and Personnel Committee meeting will take place on Thursday, December 9th at 4:00 PM, uh, in the caucus room behind us. Uh, seeing no other business to come before council this evening, I would, uh, accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
For adjourn.